You're able to join the planning commission tonight, we have a vacancy.
We have a vacancy.
Unless you want to give us a little longer.
He's here, so he didn't tell me he wouldn't be here, and he's in town. I saw him today.
Got a car coming?
White. White SUV.
Yeah, that's him.
Oh, sorry, Dina.
Fire it immediately. Wow. Thank you for your service.
Sure.
I haven't heard from him either. I do have the meeting room open, but nobody's joined. Just wanted to know if I wanted to stay because no one's joined.
Yeah, I might get quicker again. No, it's easier.
Oh, he's a kid.
Oh, he's a kid. Oh, I remember. It's kind of some crazy stuff I want to do, so.
Yeah, I saw a car.
Can you start?
We can start, yeah.
Yeah.
Good, you?
That's good, yes.
All right, we are in the City of Green River Planning Commission regular meeting on Tuesday, December 19th. It is 7:04 PM. In attendance for the meeting, we have Kim McFarland, Kent Johnson, Steph Cracker, Karen Howen, possibly Dustin Gingrich. First item on the agenda is discuss for tonight adding mineral processing and extraction to the industrial land use matrix.
This is piggybacking off of last month's meeting. Kind of what I got, I gathered consensus was to have more of an understanding about extractive or extracting minerals, and to review other cities, what they may be doing in that matrix. I couldn't find anything relating to specifically like A1's kind of business operations. I have spent a lot of time in this finders dictionary, which is definitions for a lot of, what a lot of municipalities use to define various land use matrix. There's a lot of them, the extractive industry, if you do mineral extracting, it could be anything from petroleum to water even, to any kind of mineral. So, I don't know where you guys kind of want to go, there's not really a specific word that we're looking for. It all kind of includes open pit mines, quarries, sand and gravel, any kind of mineral extracting.
So, yeah, and I think we need to identify those separately, because they're not, they're not the same thing.
This is kind of just a quick thing that Todd provided to me. Still, it doesn't really help us in our certain scenario. My thought is, we either use the definitions of light, medium, and heavy industry, or we do mineral extraction minus like open pit mines, minus whatever that we're concerned with being in industrial one zone, and then all that into industrial two and industrial three.
I guess for me, and I never considered until I saw that out there, quarreling, does that start to get into the definition of open pit, and that's already existing here?
Yeah, we do have some already sand gravel and quarries in industrial one.
But it is not, I would think that it's not a desired activity for most industrial one.
Our, yeah, I think, I think you're probably kind of correct on that.
Because that's supposed to be the buffer zone.
For low dust, low sound, that picture.
And quarrying is a high, high dust, high noise environment. And so, the ones that are existing in A1 wouldn't be, they would be grandfathered in, but it wouldn't allow, we wouldn't want to allow new quarries in that, in the I-1 zones.
Yeah, I agree, and I think the ones that are there weren't within city limits when they started, yeah, the cities had extended some.
Yeah, well, the one up here definitely was not.
The city used to use the one, I think the one you're talking about down Hastings, yeah, the city used to use it for its own concrete, so.
So, I think like open pit is the one distinguishable definition we have discussed. And if, I mean, David and I talked a little bit earlier of looking at, you know, throwing out the exclusion of that, but is there other specific definitions in this that?
I think so, I think somehow we want to define that as extraction and split that out into separate definitions, okay? Are we extracting mineral from an ore body that we have in a container? Or are we extracting mineral from the earth? And I think we ought to exclude extracting mineral from the earth in I-1, for sure. And we can define it as that, if you're extracting from the earth in I-1, that, that should be prohibited, because that would cover open pits or drilling or boring or mining of any type.
Except that if they're pumping liquid, if they're pumping water at the brine as their base, and filter, running that through a filter, and then injecting that back in somewhere else, that's a different level of hazard and noise and contamination than the other types of, of extraction, like for instance, the uranium mill. So, the uranium is going to be taking, you know, hard rock and, and processing that in a, in a way that is different than the proposed lithium.
And that's processing, that's not extracting it from the ground. That's processing.
That is, that is correct, but that is still, well, so it's mineral processing.
Processing, call processing and extraction as two different things. Like, you know, there's some stuff that, you know.
Mineral processing is kind of more of their definition, they are extracting it long ways away from their location.
Which one?
A1.
And part of, I mean, this is adding it to the matrix, so if you, if you refer to the matrix on 10-8 to, say two, I guess, yeah. So, we have the three different industrial zones, we already have some industries listed here with permitted, conditional, not permitted. So, David and I talked about this earlier as well, you know, we talked about, my concern with this is you get into kind of the weeds of very specific, different types of mineral processing, extraction, that's kind of what we're talking about. So, does it make sense to condition it in some, you know, we'll do food processing, for example, this is what I'm looking at. That is one that's a conditional in I-1, I-2, and it's permitted in I-3. So, my interpretation there is we're able to look at some of these factors of noise, of dust, of, those are all things that are addressed in our conditions, where a quarry versus someone boring might have different, a quarry you're going to look at and say, oh, you're going to have dust. We're not going to allow that under a condition of boring, there's minimal dust. So, does it allow a little bit more flexibility for the specifics of what could come in, because it's hard for us to foresee what is going to be their exact process, and to find that out in open pit, or this, or this, or this. And just looking at, you know, people's opinion of, do we condition it in any of those zones or permitted, any of those zones in any kind of matrix that way?
So, so I would say if you're going to do maybe some, some more clear definitions in, and say, open quarry, open rock quarry, then that would not be conditional in one, be conditional in two, and permitted in three.
Could you, do you think you still want to get as specific as each type of extraction? Or could you do mineral processing and extraction, leave it at that, and still do condition or permitted in, in the different matrix?
Yes, if we want to simplify and make it better bones, I think we could say not permitted in I-1, conditional in two, and conditional in three. And just leave it at that, and then every one that comes in gets looked at. I mean, obviously, in I-3, I mean, the bar is pretty low, so pretty much everything we get in, but we give the, the commission and the city a chance to look at it and know what's happening, as opposed, you know, some stuff, a lot of dust, semiotic reach out on east side, we don't care prevailing winds out of the south and the west, so we don't, I mean, obviously, it's not going to be a problem. But if you just say, we can have a quarry thing or whatever, and we start creating a lot of dust and stuff, and we're just out here just west of town, obviously, that's going to create dust cloud that comes into town constantly, because of prevailing winds, that's things we have to look at. So, maybe just do it that way, and then we can just look at each one, rather than having to sit here with us here, like, I speak for myself, that I don't know all the ins and outs of all this mineral extraction, and I don't want to have to sit down and try to piecemeal out and say, and come up with definitions for each way, that I don't even have any understanding of what it is.
That's kind of.
So, it's probably best to do it, I think, that way, and do a conditional, then we look at it, and the people that want to do the work come in, and they explain their process, and how it works, and what, what the downfalls and the upside would be, and then it can just be improved that way.
So, your suggestion and what you just threw out was not permitted I-1, conditioned I-2, permitted I-3?
Condition.
Condition, so not conditioned, conditioned, is what you threw out.
And conditional, I mean, we can't deny it, they meet all the criteria, we can't deny it, they get to do it.
That's, yeah.
We can't legally deny it, so if they meet all the conditions, then we can't legally deny it, they get to do it. It's not like it's, we're telling people, you can't do this, it's, we want to review it and make sure it's a fit for where you want to do it.
Yeah, yeah, good point. I was going to say, even though it's listed as conditional, we are technically permitting it, we're just going to put, possibly put special conditions on the request.
Well, we can deny it, but, I mean, one of our things is, you know, dust or things, if, if they're, if they're proposing something that that's, their entire process creates dust clouds, then that denies them in that.
We would have to be very specific on the reasons for the denial, so whether it be dust or severe harm to surrounding neighbors, et cetera.
And they come and go on the train on that, that was Todd that's the one that done that for us, that you do have to be very specific on a denial, and it has to be for a very real and good purpose, or it's not real and you, and you can't do it.
Yeah.
So, I do think that we should consider having maybe some type of hazardous classification in that process. If, if there is, you know, if there is minimal hazard as determined by whatever standard we can apply, then, then maybe that, that extraction process could occur in I-1. But if there is, you know, if there is toxic chemicals that are above a certain quantity, if there is the risk of radiation exposure, or, or other things, then that elevates the risk, and it would push it into a different zone, a different, yeah, a different industrial zone.
Well, I think what you're saying still falls within our, our conditional use criteria. You know, there's, the use is not detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare, right there, what classifications they are bringing to us, we can consider into that.
So, so maybe we need to expand that definition then, and that restrictions are placed according to potential toxicity and, and quantity of, of toxic materials.
I think you're getting a little too in the weeds.
Yeah, there's.
I think, I mean, we can look at our EGR, that has our, you know, our evacuation zones and things like that, and say, if this chemical were to get out, and your evacuation zone is whatever, a mile or something, and you're trying to build this next to a residential that's in within a half a mile, no. Right there, that's detrimental to public health, because if this chemical got out, your evacuation zone needs to be this, or, you know, I think, I think even with sort of the, the general term we have in our criteria, what they bring to the table, we, if those, if those are the concerns of what is, what is the chemical, or what is the, what are you using, or things like that.
So, I, I just think that that would give us more footing to stand on for a denial of, or for saying that it needs to be in this zone instead of this zone.
We would have to research to decide what we consider as a high level, low level, because I have no idea what that would be.
Any of those?
I think we stayed with Kent's proposal of not permitting it in I-1, I-2, I-3, I mean, looking at our map, I-1 or open space creates a buffer between any exposure to where anybody would be habitable. You know, there's still transportation line going through, but that's any hazardous material that drives through this town every day, so. Does anybody have any other opinion on Kent's proposal, on just of the not permitted, conditional permitted?
I would be in favor of that.
What's the?
I have a comment. As of November 14th, there were no DLE, which is direct, direct lithium extraction, that's what A1 was proposing, there were no permitted DLE mines anywhere in the United States, they haven't been permitted anywhere. And I know that Arkansas got on board with Louisiana, in a formation there, called a Snackover Formation, and a town was there, I don't know what they're doing, because it's so totally new for everyone. And so, it might be that you have to find some other towns that are dealing with this to see what you're, what are you looking at, because nobody knows.
Yes.
Absolutely nothing.
We're not talking specifically with A1 right now, we're just, we don't have any, any language in our matrix that talks about, so even these quarries are technically not allowed, possibly where they're at, if I wanted to open a quarry or somewhere, that's not in our matrix to even kind of address any of that right now. So, if we're, if we're going to create the matrix like we're talking, depending on where A1 is looking to go, then we go to that next level of looking at, what is their exact process, and does that fit with, either it's not allowed where they want to propose it, if we're, if we're going with what we're saying right now, or it's a conditional, and then their process has to fit within our conditions, it can be denied, or they're in I-3, and then that pushes out into these kind of far highway county outskirts away from town.
We're just talking about mineral extraction in general, not this, this specific project. We just don't have anything in our matrix to address it.
Any other suggestions on?
No, are you looking for a motion?
Yeah, if people are good with what Kent proposed, we can, can do a motion on that. Do you have something else standing that we're about to talk?
Yeah, I, I have, there was another one, I don't know who it was, I have, I-1, conditional, I-2, permitted, permitted, I think that's Kent. Is that for mineral processing and extraction? And then same with Kent, I-1, not permitted, conditional, permitted. Those are the two I have, do we have another one?
So. That was all that was kind of talked about, unless you want to, unless anybody has a suggestion of separating those, I mean, is there any, any situation where mineral processing, mineral extraction are going to be?
I would relatively table this and have more discussion, and get more detail, get some examples of what other cities are doing, and, and look at some, some existing ordinances.
We tabled it from last month, and I think there wasn't a lot that could be found with the specifics of it, but.
I think there's more that, I mean, you know, Congress, because there's, there's, there's plants being proposed in Salt Lake, in the Great Salt Lake, to do the same type of extraction, or the same type of processing, so those cities are going to have a process to deal with that. Either Twill County or Salt Lake County will have a process for that. You've got, uh, Landing or San Juan County that will have a, a, a ordinance for uranium extraction.
I would encourage, if we want to table it again, not to just put it on David, and for all of us to kind of do our own research on it then, and bring something back of, of what our suggestions are from that, so that we're ready to make a vote by next time based on that information. I just don't want to keep pushing it off on David to present more information to us in order to do this, because if anybody has specific concerns that's holding them up, I would encourage doing, doing kind of your due diligence to, to overcome or learn what you need to, to make that decision one way or the other.
Yeah, my understanding was we weren't setting anything specifically to lithium, I mean, this was mineral processing and extraction in general.
Right, but the two proposals that we have on the table are for lithium and uranium, and so.
I think you can't vote on, I'm already, I'm already knowing those, though, because this, anything, and that's why I'm, I'm wanting to make sure.
But we need to know how that's going to impact, how this policy is going to impact that.
We can, but I could bring a proposal table tomorrow to say, I'm going to use a giant magnet to pull stuff out of the ground, I mean, you don't know what's going to fall on the table tomorrow, and that's where we need to either be specific enough to cover what we can, or broad enough to cover what possibilities are out there. That's my concern, we start to break this down into open pit, or this, or this, or this, you don't know what someone's going to bring on the table tomorrow. Open pit, I could go out with my mini, I could start digging, are you going to call that an open pit? Like, it just gets too much in the weeds for me of what, what all that means, and we need to figure out a language that's going to cover it. I think the conditional use covers some of what our concerns are with each specific process, whether that's open pit, whether it's boring, whether that's my giant magnet that's going to suck metal out of the ground. It's, our conditions are meant to be what is going to affect the general community, or those around, or the environment, or things like that, so. But I think having, having the right choice of, you know, if we don't allow this in I-1, and it is an industry that needs the closer connections of I-1, needs the utilities, needs that, but it doesn't have any detrimental problems, and we're not allowing it, then are we limiting what industry's coming here? So, I get, you know, a little bit more research into, and, you know, maybe it does circle back around to looking at our, our conditions, and are, are we covering all our bases with those? But yeah, I just think all of us maybe have a little bit of specific concerns, and not throwing that back on David to come back with that information, and doing some research of solving some of our questions we all have individually.
We do need to do some, I agree with Kent on the shooting table. We, I think I could see, if we had a very narrow definition of what was permitted, and instead of just one line here, and then we just put it here, and what we do, actually break it out into two different lines, where one is conditional in I-1, and permitted, permitted, and then the next, the next level up would be not permitted, and conditional permitted. But we need to, I mean, do some research and learn what that is, and if we have a pretty narrow definition of it, then we could go with it in I-1.
And I don't know enough about it, and that's kind of what we're saying, yeah.
That's why I went with my suggestion.
If we have.
We've got to move on it tonight, and that's my suggestion, because I just don't know enough about it, and that covers the bases.
Yeah, and if we could find a precedent, if someone else has said, oh, you know, you can divide the two processes into A and B, and A is less detrimental and B is more, and, you know, but yeah, I don't, I don't want to be a mineral processing expert, so. Okay, so it sounds like I have a motion to table it.
One second.
Ten seconds. Paul, dinner?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll handle that.
So, do you want a specific homework each of us, or just general across the board, find what you can?
Find what you can, but I will, I'll try to do a little bit and send some stuff out, and encourage people to look into directions and.
I, I think that would probably be one of the most helpful things.
More of a more prepared ahead of time.
Is that if we can get some, some samples and send them out early, and then, and even ask for A1, or some of the companies that, what are, what are, where are some of the cities that you're, you're either working in, or your competitors are working in, that have ordinances similar to what we're going to need to, to develop. have ordinances similar to what we're going to need to, to develop.
Okay. I was looking at North Salt Lake's city code. If you go to our Green River code page, if you can look, anybody that's with this code library, the codifiers, you can review any ordinances that have been passed all across the United States. North Salt Lake does have one for mineral extraction, and they kind of just split it between offsite, onsite type stuff. They don't really have, they have like permits, things of that, but I don't know, those are specific permits to the city, so unless I ask for one, I don't know how they go through their permit and approval process. But that's somewhere I think you can start, Steph. Might help.
All right, number two, discuss residential homes within non-residential zones.
So, I think, yeah, last meeting we brought it up, it was brought up to review the homes within commercial zones. Well, I just said residential homes and non-residential zones, so it could be any zone that homes are not allowed. But I think this pertains mostly to the commercial zone and along Main Street, where most of the first block, if not farther, has residential homes in it, but is under a commercial zone. I don't know where we want to start looking or reviewing on those.
I think part of the question was, where the commercial zone is right now, does it, does it make sense of where that line has been drawn? I don't know if it's just homes, if you're going to encompass a solution there, I mean, there's, there's home, you know, some that exist right on the offset of Main Street, and, um, yeah, I think part of it was, it seemed like that line was drawn for whatever reason, back historically, when the zoning was made with that commercial zone, just whatever offset on north and south, and just, to some extent, it looks like it looped around some things, but to some extent it just goes straight across whatever distance that is off the road.
Yeah, they did six hundred feet for the first block.
Yeah, that was, that was six hundred feet.
But they also encompassed some already, like say, K-1A, stuff like that, they kind of drew that line down. I don't know what this line is, I guess maybe down Broadway, they kind of just kept that. So from what I could find was they said first block, or six hundred feet of the first block, and then they just drew those shapes around pre-existing businesses and that. And that was a, that was a-
I think some of the issues, because to me, it's better to have, in just where our zoning's drawn, easier to take and say, I want to put a house, or I want to make a house in a commercial zone and get a conditional use than vice versa. But I know some of these problems are arising, and people wanting to purchase a residence that falls within a commercial, and they're having trouble getting a loan on that because it is in a commercial zone.
Yeah.
So, it, I mean, it's a little bit hard to, I don't, you know, we can, I don't think we can ever adjust our commercial zone and eliminate all houses unless we did a jigsaw puzzle on it. And, yeah, I, I don't know, other than throwing that back to like the lenders of like, all right, why aren't you loaning on what is a re, what, you know, to go through the process to be a conditional use, you're, you're basically designating that as a residence, and that's what the process would have to be if you wanted to build a home within the commercial zone. So I, I know we brought this up last time because of some of the discussion with where that zone lands, but I'm not sure what necessarily the answer is to.
Yeah, I don't have-
And I agree with you, I think the, the reason this became an issue was people trying to purchase a home, and the bank saying that they won't loan them money on a commercial, on a, on a residential house in a commercial zone. And it doesn't make, I mean, I don't know enough of that issue to-
The issue that specifically brought this up was the issue of wanting to purchase a residence that wasn't originally a residential property, that's in commercial, and half the building was in commercial and half it was in residential, and it wasn't originally built as a home, it was actually, it was originally a church. So, and then wanting to convert that to a home, trying to get a loan to buy the property with all of those discrepancies, I don't think it was any one specific thing, it was just a whole bunch of stuff that made the bank really nervous about it. And, you know, so we corrected one thing by just putting it all in residential, but there, I doubt that's the last hurdle they're going to be jumping with that property. Now, like, a home, it's a, a home that's there, it's livable, somebody's been living in it. And, you know, I don't think a mortgage lending institution is going to look at it and say, well, it's in a commercial zone, and I can't loan the money on it. Because everything, I mean, you, you can go back to the Constitution of Utah, state code, the Constitution of the United States, everything that was permitted before, that is still in use, that hasn't terminated its use, is grandfathered. We can't have an exposed fact of law, period.
Because you're not changing the use of the building.
So we, we're not changing the use of it, I don't see this as a major issue.
And, but-
And like you said, we can't sit there and draw this line that goes like this with our commercial zone.
And with a residential home that was then proposed to become commercial in that zone, that still wouldn't have any problem, because that would be conforming use. Whereas, if it was outside of that and tried to go commercial, then they'd have to do the conditional use and things like that. So-
And I think where they're running the problem is if they bought commercial property in a commercial zone and wanted to build a new home.
Yes.
They were probably running into problems in lending institutions there, and I can see where that would be a problem. Unless, you know, they have-
So is this subdivision that you guys were working on down in there, is that, is that a different color, or is that?
That episode was doing, it's commercial, and we had got a conditional use to build homes in it.
Okay.
The city, or like Steph kind of mentioned, the city already has a process where you have a residential home in a, in a commercial zone by using a conditional use permit. And it's the lenders with the recent house, or loan drops in housing, they are skeptical on loners buying homes that are a legal non-conforming use, meaning that, like, can't say.
Okay.
So it's just discussion, I think, that came up from the concerns of last time, and if everybody's just kind of good how we are, then-
So I guess we just wait and see if we have other issues come up, and then we discuss it at that point.
Should I just, I just have a thought, maybe, anyway.
Okay.
There's a lot of homes in the area that the city's trying to get cleaned up, many of them are going to have to be demoed. So, in that case, do you have to come back to this report?
Yeah. Unless there was a, unless, if they demoed it themselves, yes, they would have to, they want to be able to rebuild. But if it was an act of nature, or, you know, tornado or fire, you can rebuild the same footprint. But if it was demoed, it would then, it would be changing use of it, so it's allowed as to be commercial.
Or go through the conditional use permit.
Or go through the conditional use permit, yeah, correct.
So, so the city has the conditional use permit that, is, is that an administrative option, so, or?
Through you guys.
Yeah, all conditional use permits.
I drew this very quickly. This would be that shape, and I think we're on agreement, but I was just doing it while you guys were discussing. This would be that shape of residential housing within a commercial zone, so it would just be all over the place.
And, and that doesn't include the north side of the road?
Doesn't include the north side.
Which are, right, adjacent to Main Street as well, so-
That's, that's probably why, back when this was drawn, and they just went and said, okay, we're just going to go six hundred feet and deal with each thing as it comes along, so we don't have this, well, that, right there.
Yeah, that's pretty, a lot.
All right, well, we're, three, discuss fence ordinance 10127, under supplementary procedures applicable to zones.
So, anytime I've had to discuss the fence ordinance, it hasn't been well received. I also, I also agree that, because one thing, one thing that I really worry about, it doesn't even defer from if it's residential to commercial to industrial, because I think some, maybe some industrial places, they need to have a privacy fence, they, we may want them to, but they can't based on their code. But even with residential homes, I feel like our setback for anything higher than four feet is too far. Tyler kind of wanted to be here to sponsor this code because he would like to see a change. He's just, recently, they had a baby, so he doesn't want to be a grand group of people. Currently, the setback is forty feet from the road. And most homes, even in our R1 setback zones, two and three, it's either twenty, or, yeah, twenty-five or twenty. So I feel like twenty is, is fine, as far as the setback goes.
So that's essentially saying, just to kind of put this in, in drawn-out terms like my head goes. So, your house is set at twenty feet back, right now we're saying, if you wanted, you could not exceed four feet, up to forty feet. So if you wanted to pull like a backyard up to your house line, you would have to have a side fence or a front side fence essentially not taller than four feet.
I, I think the forty feet is excessive, I, I was reading this before we started the meeting, and I, I, you know, it should, you should be able to run the, the six-foot side obscuring fence through your backyard, if that's what you want to do, you ought to be able to run that up to a parallel line in front of your house. I mean-
Front of the house.
That's pretty much, if you go drive down any street in anywhere in USA, that's pretty much how it is. And I think that's a good way of doing it. You could write that, or it says, you know, your side obscuring fence has to be on a parallel even with the front of the house. And that, that covers everything. And you don't have to put a bridge in there, because we allow twenty feet for the house, but what if somebody wants to go back twenty-five feet? Well, you, you still, for the look, the aesthetics of it, it's still going to look the best even with the front of the house.
Okay.
And it gives people the, the opportunity to come up to the front of their house with their backyard, and tie that right in. And a lot of places you go in, in neighborhoods all over the place, you're going to see that, where this, this is the front of your house right here, and your fence comes up here, and the side obscuring right here, and you'll have a gate or something to go in there. And actually, Orem City actually requires that. I know that for my brother living there for a while, they actually require that. Depending on what you do with your backyard, they require you to have side obscuring to hide it.
And corner lots, how does that affect those?
Corner lots do have your, I wish it wasn't so far.
Okay. The side triangle depth is at least six feet within, fences walls or hedges that front on a corner lot must maintain a side triangle minimum depth of at least six feet.
Then on side backyards where a fence wall or hedge is constructed, parallel to on a corner, a corner lot fence shall be setback five feet from the back of the curb or side street.
Oh, yes, yeah. So you'll have your, from the curb, five feet, which is kind of typical, because you probably have a sidewalk.
Sidewalk before, yeah.
And then your side triangle, how about these six feet back?
Literally a lot of it, it's housekeeping.
It's comfortable.
It was cold a minute ago.
Just because you're talking.
Because you're been, you're in the hot seat. You're getting grilled.
I, I mean, we can take feedback from what people are saying, and I think you and I can sit down and propose, right up, draft some changes that we could vote on for next meeting.
Next meeting, okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else have kind of anything? I'm, I'm comfortable with removing forty feet, having it to either, kind of like what you were saying, to whatever your front setback is.
Even with the front, even with the front of the house.
Just, okay.
That's the easy, that's the easiest, the coolest words, it covers everything, I think.
Set, front setback of this zone?
Although I think they're all the same.
It's really silly to have somebody's house twenty feet in the houses, and you got to go forty feet with the fence, I mean, the house is twelve feet tall, and you can't have a six-foot fence even with it.
Yeah. So we'll keep the rest of the, I mean, we'll still bring this next month, but-
We can look at what changes might need to be made to make it applicable to commercial. Where we do-
Yeah, and there's some stuff, we may want to write an addendum for commercial and industrial both.
I feel like those can probably be administratively approved, if you wanted to put it that way. Other cities that I look at, they, that's kind of how it was, it was just administrative approved, which would fall on to me, or whatever team they have, in this case, would fall on to me. But, um, yeah, they was all separate as far as this, they would separate it residential, industrial, commercial. But I feel like we can keep our basic format we have here, and then, like you say, have an addendum of like commercial and industrial, however you guys want that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to see some wording that, that specifies what requirements industrial and commercial have.
Yeah, we need something in there for them, because this, this ordinance is written primarily for industrial, for residential. You can see that by the way it's worded and laid out in the thought process, and there was no allowance made for industrial and commercial there.
I agree. So do we have any public comment that you want to?
Talk about fences.
You don't want to talk about fences?
Not really.
Moving on.
I've heard of that.
I just have one other thing on fences. This, this really seems to regard properties that are on the street. And just looking at it, if you have a lot that's kicked back somewhere, for instance, like mine, I wouldn't even know how that would fit in, how I could put fence on my property and meet the standard. And I don't know how that would be worded, I'm happy to look at some other stuff and see. But if we're going to address this issue, let's, let's address the entire issue, so.
Yeah, because it does, so like flag lots, or even like your law. If it came to me, I think we should have something that addresses it. If it came to me, I'd be like, well, you're past the forty feet, so you start at six.
Yeah, but I want to be my entire property.
But, yeah.
Okay, where are you going? Yeah.
On merge right there, I think your, your fence, your whole lower floor fence in front of the house, it's all about sight, be able to see people coming.
Right.
Her situation, you're not on main road, totally different, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, I mean, you go around and go put a six-foot fence on your whole piece, but-
Yeah, nobody will even know until they-
And then that's like, okay, that's quite a bit of money, obviously, to work out six feet of fence, I mean, that's, that's crazy, but, I mean, obviously, we just have to work that in, I don't, because I think more with the line of sight, for the people driving down the road, or where someone can see something coming up to the road, or you're not getting to run the road.
Line of sight and fire.
And David and I talked about it a little bit, you know, people are coming to the table with potential issues or questions in constructing a fence, but there's also the enforcement of things that aren't a fence but obstruct the line of sight, you know, someone in town argues they should have a taller fence because their neighbor already has junk that obstructs- because their neighbor already has junk that obstructing line of sight. So why can't they build a fence to block out that junk for their obstruction? So it's kinda an argument, so I think it, you know, again, I, I don't mean to come back on David, I come back kind of on the city as a whole of, you know, if, if we're gonna be sitting here at this table making this code for people that are wanting to do new construction, which to me, a fence is usually an improvement of your property and trying to, you know, hide your own backyard or different things, it, it comes back onto enforcement of what are other things that are obstruction, overgrown vegetation, trailers, cars, all that kinda stuff.
Cars on top of each other, however.
And, and I guess the other thing is agricultural, so, so I'll throw in another thing is agricultural fences. So, so, you know, if, if I've got agricultural property next to my house and I'm limited to a four foot fence, that creates a hazard because my horses may jump that.
Train'll not do.
We're talking about side obscuring, though, I mean, you could do a non-side obscuring fence that keeps.
Only, you kinda correct, only at four feet.
Well, something needs to be put in there, you know, like right here with your fence and outside obscuring, such as chain link or similar type material, but it does not exceed four feet in height, except for in agricultural or in cases containing livestock.
Tyler and Ren met earlier today, and I'm just reading from their notes. He says he leans towards the industrial zones having free rein as long as the fences are engineered of higher than six feet, but also could be side obscured at six feet. So maybe we can look at agriculture at that point, too. We can figure something out.
Yeah, but, but I don't wanna side obscuring six foot fence for, for agriculture.
No, I mean, you, you definitely don't gotta go to six feet for agriculture.
You can go up that high, but not have to go up that high.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and well, and, and you don't wanna limit that because, I mean, for instance, the bird farm, when that was, that was functioning, they would need a fence that's higher than six feet.
They go to six feet, it has to be engineered plans to be above six feet.
But they would be fine, cause they're far enough away from the road to start that six feet. Yours, where it's down Sharon, not Sharon, Tamara. Would that technically fall under a side?
It's a front, I mean, it's the front. And the side of the house, you know, so.
Yeah, I think it's something to look into though.
So. Okay.
All right, and before.
Can we find any more? What other fences do we have to make up?
Discuss zoning change and or development of parcel ID zero one dash one five four V dash zero zero four four located along South Green River Boulevard.
So this one, I'm passing off kinda through to the planning commission. I feel like it would end up here anyway. Um, we have, Dawn, your name is Dawn, wow, I used to have Dawn over here, so prove me up, you're dead. Um, so Dawn and Trina, they have some property, um, or looking, what we're looking at is Chat Hunt's old property, down Green River Boulevard. They have some ideas for housing, maybe some vacation homes, and I'll let you guys add anything to that if you'd like.
Do you have the drawing of it?
Yes, here we go.
So that's kind of what, just, like it's, okay. Give me a second to figure out, okay. So that's something down, going south, down there.
Yeah, this would be.
So we were trying to, um, use the five acres as both housing and tiny home type cabin, look like tiny homes but cabins, but we don't want like camp, typical campground with trailers being pulled in and stuff like that. But we were trying to keep it to where the housing would be close to the current housing, still the road be coming in on the north side, along that with the housing up along the other housing that's on the north of it, and also to the west of it, pushing the housing towards the back. And I took consideration of the measurements that I was told, keep the roads, things like that, was able to put that in. We touched upon, just be as the side, we'd have to check in to see the sides, if needed, wherever we be. That was just an idea of where we could put it, to try and keep the housing separate from the campground. Also, the campground being towards the main road, it's directly across the street from the state park. So it fits in with that, they're both, you know, close by, and then A O came out to the south of that area. So we're trying to keep the housing close to the housing, the campground area, close to the campground area. With that grassy area in between, two separate entrances, one for subdivision area, and the other one to the south would be to go into the campground area. And, yeah, you were just confused on kind of what, because right now it's R one, right?
Yeah.
Um, looking at R, I mean, you can talk about where your views on or what we should look at.
So there's tons of different things I, I was looking at. R one is typically for, as we know, our single family homes. They can have some duplexes as long as they resemble a single family home. I think my, oh, let me get to the area.
There we go.
There we are. So, yeah, we're located right here, R one zone. My questions and where I'm stuck on is what zone would allow both housing and these kind of vacation homes, I guess we could call them? Cause in R one, R two, R three, R three does allow boarding homes stuck at that. But our other toast says that you only allow one home on each piece of property. So if they were looking to do this area.
Are you thinking those as like long-term rentals, like grandma renting that or these like ninety?
No, more like basically, well, like Moab has a ton of them, they have their own little cabins.
So kind of like a.
Vacation rentals.
Like a campground, it's not, you know, obviously not.
Campground cabins, just coming to pay nightly.
I just wanna, I mean, like, I'm not going for the typical cabin lot, so I would say tiny home just because I'm wanting something unique, if you're not just walking in looking at some log cabins.
But it would be essentially kind of like a.
Overnight, basically like.
A business as well, yeah. So I, I think, I mean, just off the cuff, whether it, and we could potentially look at what that whole area, whether that whole area should really be R one or some of that should be divided because that starts to, to come into where we already have smaller homes there, we already have our smaller lots, we already have trailer park down there, things like that. So we could divide it that whole zone, but just kinda making it off the cuff whether that whole area becomes R three, dividing those lots up, and, and I'm thinking it's kinda similar to what Epicenter had to do with that big parcel they got, so dividing the individual house lots.
Why is it you can't, I'm sorry, I don't know why.
Okay, keep looking up.
Stay on the tour.
Subdividing the individual house lots, leaving that large lot in the center, and then getting a conditional use to potentially have a campground, is what we would call it, on that lot. Whether that would.
So you're saying like, cause he was thinking R three for the whole thing, that would make the, cause R three can have single family homes, correct?
Yeah, and that would be, depending on what your lot size, you're looking, I'm assuming kind of smaller ones. Just depending on what your lot size, if your lot size fits within the R one, they could be R one. But if you're, if you're wanting to do smaller lots on there, then R three is what would make the most sense, and then.
We kinda wanted a little bit, like, right now, I drew up like an idea of just the typical, we did, there, I know the setbacks can be smaller than this, but I think the benefit of gaining Green River is finding all the larger lots than what we have up north. But, so right now, I was kinda doing off on the large side, I mean, we have thirty foot backyards, say a three foot house, twenty-five foot front yard. I know we can make those smaller according to what's allowable. So kinda this is where our preliminary idea, but also wanted to kind of look and see kinda what type of housing is needed in Green River. Is it more, I mean, we could get more homes in there that are smaller homes, but is that what's needed? Or is, would somebody like some bigger homes, you know? So I kept the lot size as right now, a little bit larger, to some larger homes. Some other ideas I had, and I don't know if this had to do with like what zoning was up to. I know when we first moved from Green River, we purchased a, some property up north, had a single family home with a detached garage with an apartment above it. We were able to rent out that one bedroom apartment, made half of our rent. I think that is a huge thing that people in Green River cannot afford homes, but what that could do for them to have, if we could do something like that, to where, cause some of these like corner lots, see that one right there, in the corner, they're large enough that you could do possibly a detached garage with an apartment above, or something that just gives more options for people that people aren't used to here. That up there, I mean, like we with Alimah, they are making it where nobody can, they cannot say no to a accessory dwelling unit, as long as it's smaller than their own comp, at least the state is saying it. But, but it just helps people to be able to afford homes, and I think that's a huge thing in Green River people can't. I mean, especially prices are so high, to be able to give them different options of whether they have a little tiny accessory dwelling in their backyard, or whether it be, you know, hey, we put it above our garage, we're able to rent out, we have like a whole bunch of different ideas of what we can do. That's just kinda more like we wanna try and have a little bit of time to figure out what's most needed in Green River. Maybe stomach a lot to be, cause where we built our house, Dawn did all the housing in that whole development. They had single family homes around the exterior, duplexes around the exterior, houses, single family homes. Okay, twin homes. Ours was a single family home with a apartment above the garage, and then in the center was all townhomes. So they had mixed areas that leave it open for so many different incomes for people. So with that, that's out, playing on the different sides of the lots, you know, we could do just some small thousand twelve foot or five foot homes, but we, there is areas where we could, you know, hey, let's do a little bit, maybe a smaller home, but accessory apartments that can help people to be able to afford a home. And I think Green River needs some more open, you know, if there's, they said, he said, there's, the zoning right now, there's not things that just like doesn't fit into one of the specific zones, but to be open to, and that's why we thought maybe R three would be good. We could do some smaller homes if we found, hey, there's a lot of people, or maybe there's five people, let's say, but I would love small homes, if I can afford, we could shrink some of these lots to do that. Or maybe there's more people that wanna have, you know, standard size home lots, whatever. But we could kinda mix, but I was trying to just keep it to where we weren't paying campground around next to the existing homes, and that's why we wanted to separate it and be considerate of the people there, keep the campground area close to the campground areas on the main road. And then also, we were looking at doing, like, housekeeping residents on the property along with like Main Door Pile Alien next to it, and outdoor play, so just whatever, just kinda keeping it open. We're just gonna go through our bank loans, they're just trying to say, hey, what is it for one? We need to grab the zoning, what is allowed, and then the banks there, all four, they seem that it'd be great thing for Green River to be talked to, to see how it's all needed. And the campground for us is, for us is, at some point, I mean, Dawn's here, he lives here, more than he knows it there. So something that we could, at some point, if needed or wanted, to move back to Green River, and obviously, he's not getting younger and can't keep doing what he's doing forever. So to us, it's, hey, something that we could turn to is something to bring us here when we're older and ready and could take care of it, in the meantime, help, continue to help the town with housing and, you know, like we've been doing, but on a bigger scale.
So the lot size, how many acres are they?
Um, I didn't figure out acreage, I have like each one, like eighty-five, like say this, eighty-five by eighty-five with this one. It fits the setbacks that are required on like eight and eight, I did like ten to ten on a lot of them. It, it failed the requirements for the setbacks, so I didn't actually figure out how much the acreage is on each one, and will be different, so.
So R, R three. R three would give you the most flexibility, cause it allows you to go to that smaller size, but you can always go bigger. So if you find you want that mix, or you're finding it makes sense to have some smaller, you can request a zone change to R three. If you decide the life lot sizes you want fit right now, or whatever, you propose them within the R one, I think you could just try to keep it as R one. You're obviously gonna go through the process of a subdivision, depending on how many lots you wanna do. So there's either one to four, five to nine, or ten or above, is a different kind of review process for those.
And I think right now we got eight, eight to ten, if it's more around.
So whatever you subdivide as, and then, you know, if you decide that whole, the, the camp, the cabin spot is then, you know, one larger lot and, and the houses are, are separate ones, you'll just go through that subdivision process, but I think, I think we can work through how to, to sort of get you guys through that process, just depending on if it is smaller, smaller lots that you guys can put in a zone change, and we can, we can review through that and see. Like I said, I think some of those, some of that area down there maybe makes sense to be in R three, and I know I brought up with David before that I camp subdivided into half residential, and I don't even remember how really that process got approved, and that falls back on us in the city of, of looking at how that was done, but that's a precedence you could throw back at us and say, that happened right across the way.
Very similar to what we're doing, was right next door, there's R three behind there, right, there was, I remember there, didn't R three change what walked behind us? So it's very similar to what is, and he was saying, you know, it does make sense to change it to R three because it is what is around, but I say, I want to be considerate with the housing, we didn't just throw a campground in the middle of, you know, someone's backyard.
Yeah.
But obviously, when you subdivide something, people that are purchasing, they're aware of, you know, campground, you know, they're fine with it, but to put it right in somebody's backyard that, hey, we lived there forever, I don't want a campground behind me, so that's why we tried to make.
So you have fencing, separate them, or how would you?
I would.
That's what I want, bitch.
Okay.
I'd like to take in the whole thing and do, I mean, you go up north, you see subdivisions, they go on in there, but nice round subdivision, and then I'd like to separate the subdivision from the campground, obviously, cause I don't want that.
And then I had, I had it drawn with that retention pond grass areas where even the, behind people's homes, there is that separation, grass area, it's not just right in some of these backyards. So we would still have a separation between someone's yard to the campground, between the grassy area, the road separates it. I mean, yeah, of course, it stands to be great to put in, I wasn't really thinking in that much depth right now. But, I mean, we have the thirty-six foot road, sidewalks on in between, and then on the other side of thirty-six foot road on the campground side, I did keep another ten feet just as whether it be a grassy area, could have fenced up, whatever. And then you still have a road for the campground that wraps around that is at least twelve to twenty, yeah, twelve to twenty feet, I guess it's one way or two ways. So there's still a pretty big, I mean, we got forty-eight feet plus another thirty feet. So we have a pretty big gap between the property houses, the front yards to where the campground is, is quite a ways. But, yeah, obviously.
Except for that, that one lot on the cul-de-sac is the only one that would be considering to, fully considered to be adjacent to it. That one.
The one on the bar.
That one.
Oh, that one. Um, yeah, but I did have that kinda grassy area, whether that's.
Right, you've got the retention pond.
And that's why I didn't measure that out.
I think, I think that's not our choice that goes into, you know. Depending on your subdivision, someone whether they wanna purchase a house there or not. I think, you know, moving forward to the R three zone change definitely gives you the most flexibility. So if you wanted to move forward with that, because like I said, it will allow for smaller lots, it won't hold you to those bigger ones, if you just start to, to move things around and make some changes. So if that is kinda the, the next step you wanna go forward with us, is, and, and you'll submit it for, for what your parcel is, and then as a group here, we will review, does it make sense to look at further areas within that? We've talked about a lot of areas that are already smaller lots, that would, that would just kinda be. Um, we've talked about a lot of areas that are already smaller lots, that were, that are just kind of a blanketed R1 on them, and maybe it makes sense to break those up a little bit more, so. Um, I, yeah, that would be the next step to, to get your zoning and, you know, to conform that, and maybe you end up doing them all bigger anyway, and that's still fine. And then, yeah, your, your subdivision, however many lots you end up subdividing inside, your subdivision will come to us next.
And then as far as like individual lots, do you, cause we haven't ever done this before in whole subdivision, um, with the idea of possibly doing, I mean, I even thought about twin homes, you know, they, they were based some on the cost, but it, I don't, I don't agree for, there's no twin homes there. So there's different things that we were looking at, um, with this, did the R3 would allow for these different type of homes if we decide to go that route, we just haven't decided, so we, I kind of want to do some type of research and see really what do surveys, what do people want and what they need, what they afford and.
So the, the survey that was done previously was they all want single housing, uh, single-family housing, um, but in reality, they can't afford that.
And that's why we're trying to think of, how did we afford our first home? We have, you know, it's in our payment on a, you know, a house.
Valid what you're saying of like a good mix, there's people that are currently renting and are in a state where they want to go bigger, make a family, there's people that are just coming to town, new deputies, new teachers, new everything that need to just kind of start out small, um, so I think you're going to have the best market in being able to do a mix there. Um, go to Epicenter, talk to them, I don't totally want to advocate, but they've, they've done this research and they'll, they'll help you with some of those answers of of where the market's at and everything, um.
Would we need to be able to get approved in R3, we have to know details for is that something, it was with R3. As we develop it, like I said, the banks I've talked to, they're totally for it, we'd love to do something down there, we think it'd be great. Just on there, and they said they're able to help with, as, as builders, as good rates, just like they would, they're great big builders up north, they still do help you create rates, and they said even with your buyers, we can help them with lower rates, um, because we're working with you. So, I mean, there's things like that they're telling me that can help people with a lower rate than what I guess is typical right now. So, you know, we just need to, on step first, you know, first step first is getting the zoning right.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have to know all the details for zoning change, you'll, you'll look at it as a parcel as a whole for just the zoning change, so you'll say, we own this chunk, we want to rezone this whole chunk, uh, when you start to get in the weeds of the subdivision and stuff, that's where you're going to have to break it down more. But just for the rezoning, you're going to say, we want to take our parcel, however many acres it is, we want to rezone that to R3, um, that'll definitely give you the most flexibility, also with these multifamily options. Um, so the only reason I would discourage it is just, it's already in R1, and if you feel what you're doing conforms with R1, keep it, uh, but if you're thinking you want a little bit more flexibility, there are those options, then yeah, go ahead with the zone change.
Exactly, flexibility, I think it needs to.
And that, yeah, that'll be your first step, and, and we don't need to know the details of all your lots or anything for the R3 right now.
My one concern is would that, kind of the campground that we're talking about, or tiny home village, whatever you want to call it, would that need to be subdivided with each individual home?
It's not going to be run like a campground, they're going to retain ownership of all that.
They're not building on foundations, so they should be.
Yeah, they would be like a campground.
It's going to be like cabins in any of the campgrounds we have right now. It's like, that's why I was checking, that it wasn't going to be long-term rentals or anything, if they're running it just as a rental business, like a campground, but just cabins, not spots.
Then we'll do like he said, conditional use, call it tourist homes, rooming houses, boarding houses, whatever we call, and then we'll approve that whole area.
For that, yeah, that lot.
Okay.
I have a question. When, if something is done like that, is there a, a, how many vehicles are allowed? Is there something about that?
Yeah, there's, that's determined in, in the permission process.
Are you talking with the, the subdividing, so subdividing the lots will become residential, that's just like any home in town. The commercial, that's within the code, how many basically parking spots you need based on what your commercial is, your size, I mean, every, every commercial building in town has an equation of how many parking spots they have to provide.
I'm just thinking.
So they would have to consider that, and I'm assuming with cabins, your, people are going to want to park right out of, so you're going to have.
We have areas for each one to have parking spot.
And then you have, like, just for Green River to be aware of and try and learn lessons from Moab, like these, all these things to go out and play in the desert, like how many of those you have at a rental unit and driving up and down the city? I think, I think it would be really, um, beneficial for Green River zoning and city and mayor and everyone to, to try and learn lessons from Moab and and figure out how to make it work to benefit Green River and to understand what happened in Moab.
I think what we need to learn from Moab is they already had rules to follow, they just didn't enforce them, and now they're starting to enforce them, Green River is.
Are you going to enforce this, David?
I've been trying.
I think it's a valid comment for something for them to consider, you know, people come in with their trailers, they come, you know.
I would need to take away your, your, your desires, I'm just looking at in broad.
No, I think definitely it's, it's a suggestion to them, I think, you know, we can't stereotype that rentals are going to be side-by-sides and this and that, um, you know.
Yeah, you can't do that.
Anybody could come in just hiking through and I'm tired of sleeping in a tent and I want to sleep in a cabin and I'm just, just me and my backpack. Um, but definitely it's not for you guys to have to, you know, how do you?
I would talk to adjoining landowners and get them on your team. This is the same council I gave my brother out here on Hastings Road. Because we want to try to have some kind of continuity with our zoning. We just discussed that with our, with our commercial zone and not want it to look like a game of Tetris.
Do you feel like that's the case with this, with R3 all around?
Yeah, see, you know, maybe. So you continue with and, and have something bigger than, we're just going to start taking each individual's property that they own and zone it to fit their needs and their desires.
I would say, I would say.
And then we have our zoning map starts looking like somebody's game of Tetris.
I would say give a heads up a little bit of what maybe your ideas are, so it's not a shock. When, cause we have to notify if we rezone, and we just did your parcel say, um, we have to notify everybody around, and I don't want necessarily you guys to get in the weeds of zoning because people freak out about if they're going to get rezoned and that's going to restrict me, and what does that mean, that people don't understand it? Um, but I need to give a little heads up about what you're doing and get them like, so that it's not just a shock to them. It would be my suggestion, people, people come in and have a lot to say without understanding a lot, so.
And that's why I tried to be, like I said, we could have, we talked when we first purchased property as, let's just do a campground. That was, that was our thought first, was then we're like, we need to help, we build houses, we want to be able to still help community that way and do it. And because of the whole, you know, hey, put a campground in somebody's backyard that has already been living there, is that something that is fair to them? If they don't want that, then it's going to be turned into a fight, so, which is why we designed it the way we did to help with that, so. I mean, yeah, obviously you probably have somebody that doesn't like it, but I still like it. I don't know, pretty reasonable way to define it to not be enforcing anything on another person that's already been living there. Um, it's just like me, and there's some who do it with the house, house behind the house.
China gell farm too, so.
Yeah, and that's a whole other thing, trying to get that out of there. But, yeah, I mean, it'll definitely be, uh, you know, it'll look nice, it'll be, I don't know, I think it looks pretty good and everybody we've talked to says for sure, that's a good thing in the banks, I have a few banks are fighting over, we could do funding with it and stuff, we think it'd be really good for them here, but, yeah, so I don't know, just, I guess we can figure out how to do that, but I mean, that's a little list. Yeah, we'll figure out, but.
I would just, yeah, cause i- if we go forward with the zone change, they will get notified, so just, so they have a little bit of understanding of why this is, you know, we're rezoning this to R3, you know, it's a cool concept, what you guys are doing and being able to, to talk your passion of it, not just them getting a letter in the mail and not understanding it, so. And if they have questions about what that means, whether they're included in that zone or whether they're just adjacent to that zone, it'll be distinguished in that letter, um, send them in to David to, to discuss that, cause people think that's going to change something upon them and it's, it's not, so. But, cool. Thanks for coming. Okay, we will, so you'll give David on the zone change, he'll just put in the, the application for that, and then he'll come back to us and.
So do you just create some timing, how long, just because we have to go to banks and they have to go, like where typically, how long would it take to do that kind of stuff and?
It'll, it'll come to us first, um, we'll make a decision on whether it's just your parcel or around that, um, we can do a public hearing as part of that, right? Okay, so yeah, so public hearings, public comment will be part of that, we'll listen to public comment on it, we'll make a vote on whether it's just your parcel or whether we want to include others, and then that'll kick to city council the next month, so. Say this can all happen in sequential order, it would come to us in January. We would basically make our suggestion is what it's called, so we'll vote one way, whether it's just your parcel, whether it's more, we will send our suggestion to the council and then they will vote, so best case scenario, everything squared away by February, if, if it kind of goes through in sequential order.
Or plan on March.
Like where March is where we're looking at, you will find like things.
So you guys sit up top for two, some of the struggle that David's had with is, is just losing communication with someone requesting it, so put in your requests and just, and stay in contact with David on dates and things like that, so.
If it helps, um, if they're able to do, like those eight subdivisions, will be, will be the ones, or, or what are you looking to put up there? So if that helps, if they're still able to do that, it's the tourist homes, boarding homes.
And our banks talked, so we could do it all in stages too, we could, he's like, do you want to start a campground, do you want to start with the housing, do you want to do them together? It was something we were kind of like, well, let's get it, the zoning first, and then we can decide, maybe we'll do one house and one cabin, another house, I don't know, you know, kind of just see the bank to bank, it's all kind of different stages, um.
Start getting on board with the county about your subdivision too, um.
Yeah.
We had had that engineered out, drawn, submitted to the county, and you know how quick the county moves, so um, I would, I would sequentially start conversation with the county on what that subdivision is going to be.
Yeah, and then you guys have to approve.
The subdivision will come to us soon, so.
Can they do a, uh, I have heard that they did a little bit quicker, turn around with last year's, or not last year's, last month's meeting, they're able to get it a little quicker, instead of waiting the whole entire month, again, could we do like that?
I have to have a minimum of ten days posting to notify landowners, and if we grow, if we include more property, then I have to post, and we have to have another public hearing for those extras. And that's still a minimum ten-day public notice and posting. And I typically try to allow for as much as possible.
So I guess, again, you and I could maybe just look if, I can't see that on that map from here, but I will look on my computer closer and just see if there yeah, what, what makes sense there, cause I think that is an area that makes more sense as R3 than R1.
Hey, why is that one?
Size of lots, so.
Two thousand, you like, change that shit to there, makes more sense.
So we'll see if we can pull more of it in so that it's not just you and if we can kind of get that all done quicker.
So yeah, it could be a minimum of ten, well, I need ten days for the posting when we have a public hearing. If, if it's approved here, it has to then be moved to city council, and the city council, Tyler and Ren are um, the ones that post for that, so if they want it earlier, we'd have to talk to them if they want to call me. I would say it's still probably like twenty-day minimum. About as quick as we can do, and then even after the subdivision, I guess, well, that's where the zone change, and then the subdivision, it'll be about the same.
Go through the county?
Yeah, go through the county, actually, on the last subdivision, it was like two months going through the county.
Depends on them, I mean, them, uh, whatever their signed copies, kind of what you end up needing. I mean, it could go through and you can submit it to the county and everything's good, but for them to, to get it all signed and posted, you know, depending on what you need that for, your financing, anything like that, that was kind of the, the process that felt like it took forever. All right, uh, fine, discuss period in our calendar year 2024, planning commission meeting dates and times. Do we have any big conflicts with the dates, do we need to change any specific date for anybody?
Uh, I did, I saw that it was sent, was it just the same date, days and weeks?
Yeah, it should be the, whatever, Thursday, third.
Tuesday's third.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, I don't even know.
Yeah, third, Tuesday of the month, I was still looking for seven o'clock, same time, same days.
Seven were best for people, people want an earlier time, or seven, kind of the.
As good as anything else.
So there's no excuse for me, if you move it any earlier, I'm going to be absent for a while.
Okay, yeah, keep it seven, just want to make sure that was.
I don't think there's a motion on it, isn't there?
There's, there's a motion on keeping the calendar as it was posted.
So moving.
Second.
First, second, cam, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right, so it's discussed period in our consent agenda includes November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, planning commission minutes. I'll make the motion to approve November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, planning commission minutes. First, Dan, the second, Dustin, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, any other discussion? What you want is.
I need to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, okay.
Did you get signatures?
Um, yes.
So what's our chances of getting access
What?
From the river, up the river?
Was you here?
I was here, but I don't want to know what the chance.
According to the county attorney, it's open.
Well, but I've been involved in this before, as a, probably, yeah, as a seventeen-year-old kid.
Yeah.